Thank the kind of board, the kind of commission, and nine session. Commissioner Jones, would you lead us in prayer, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for this day that you've given unto us. We thank you for this time that you've given us set aside here today for decision-making, Lord, for discussing all of our collective futures. We ask that you would give us discretion and understanding today. Help us to make the most prudent and wise choices in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Next on the agenda will be approval of the minute.
Sir, move.
Sir.
I got a motion on the floor from Commissioner Mast, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Next will be payment of the county bill.
Sir, move.
Sir.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mast, second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda will be public comment. Any public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am.
My name's Terri Sence. I'm with the Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Assistance. I'd like to update the commissioners on the SBA loan numbers for Franklin County. As of November 29th, 100 loans for $3,911,000 have been approved for Franklin County residents. These include 83 home loans and 12 business loans for physical damages and five loans to businesses for working capital money. However, out of more than 1,500 FEMA referrals, SBA has received only 319 loan applications. This means that a majority of homeowners and business owners are not taking the time to fill out an application and thereby possibly missing out on a valuable tool for their recovery. SBA would like to continue to encourage homeowners, renters, businesses, and nonprofit organizations who suffered damages from Hurricane Michael to complete an SBA loan application. The Disaster Recovery Center at the Carabelle Library has a full staff to assist survivors in getting customized help in completing the application. They are open Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There's also a mobile disaster recovery center in Alligator Point at the Mission by the Sea Church, which is open until December 6th, 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. A survivor can also apply online at disasterloan.sba.gov. Also, the deadline to apply for an SBA loan is December 10th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you very much.
If there are any more public comment? Any more public comment?
Sure.
Next on the agenda will be Department Director with four, Mr. Howard Davis.
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
Good morning.
We continue on cleaning up through the county from the storm. And also, like the weekend, we've had a lot of rain, so we've got a lot of flooding issues. When people putting a lot of stuff in your ditches, your cupboards, a lot of that stuff is washed up in your cupboard, so we're having to get a long pole, try to get in there to shove up in the cupboard and try to unstop them. So, we're gonna be working through the county, basically doing that right after the next month or so. So... And then I got even one more. We continue on at Alligator Point, maintaining that 1,100 foot. So, we should order there, get up on the road through the weekend, you know, with the front coming.
Mm-hmm.
And also, we got another one on River Road. We've got to change out one of the metal bridges, which we got an estimate on it for $5,200 for. We asked the board's approval. The state's gonna fix it, the ones that did, Timber Island.
Pledge of the board.
I said my district, I'm gonna make a motion to fix it. Hey, you know how long it's gonna be, 'cause you know hunting season starts in a couple weeks?
I can get back up with them today and see. I know they're working on some bridges on 98. So, hopefully in a week or so, they should be in the picture.
Okay.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Mast. Any more discussion on it?
Michael, will you call the state and see if they might would help us on that bridge? Use it quite a bit?
For funding?
Yeah, for funding, see maybe if they're...
State far, yeah.
But they travel that road more than anybody with them tractors.
Yeah.
So, it's Farquhar Street?
Yes, it's Farquhar.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
And that's all I've got this morning.
The board got anything for?
Howard, I just was wondering about the borrowed product that you have that you're using to fortify our Alligator Point Road.
Yes, sir.
All of that product is stored there on the right-of-way of the highway.
Mm-hmm.
I think you're bringing in material, stockpiling it there for the purpose of going back on the washed-out road.
Yes.
And repacking and re-fortifying the surface of the road.
Mm-hmm.
Is there some thought about someday, maybe we have some area where all that borrowed material can still be conveniently stored, but off of the highway and more cosmetic look?
We tried about years ago to get a little spot from the state. Couldn't get it, so, you know, as of now, we... Yeah, that would be good if we could get a staging area. It'd be great to get off a highway, but as of now, I mean, that's the only place we got.
The county does not own any property in Alligator Point, except for right-of-way. So, our option is to negotiate either a lease or just allow us from the State Park, all points, State Park. I mean, they... They're the majority property down there.
Mm-hmm.
But we have to work something out with them. It'd be the most logical solution.
Lease would cost us money and...
Well, maybe not.
Maybe not, yeah.
Yeah, they're pretty free. The problem is, that's a State Park.
Yeah.
Bought and purchased and maintained for environmental purposes. And so, are they gonna give us an acre of land and dump material on there? Problem, that's the battle.
And the closest area we got is the Carabelle pit. And when you have a washout down there, a storm, you having a... I mean, it takes days, you know, to fix a road. And you're closer we got the stuff, the quicker we can fix it.
Let me ask one other one. It's possible the Alligator Point Water Resources has a well field that's right there at 98, intersection of 98 and Alligator Drive.
It is.
And I don't know if they would let us store something there that's right there across 98.
Yeah.
And that's not that much further away, but that would be out of sight if they would allow us to put some material on their well field.
Okay.
Well, Michael, you are... I mean, Michael, you get with Commissioner Burke, if you will, and I'll try to get up with the right to do, connect with them, and see can you make something happen.
Okay, thank you.
If we can. Can't, we try.
Well, it would be good if we could get a place down there to store that stuff, but...
The board got anything else for Mr. Howard? Keep up the good work. Y'all doing a good job.
Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Farmer Davis. It's all the way through.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I just, a couple things I just want to bring to your attention, Commissioner. You'll pass one of them down for me, please.
Take over the touch.
What we have here is just a proposal that I had Jason White to look at, the road on the Fisher Pier on Island Drive there. The damages caused... Amount was $55,539 to repair. I realize that's something we probably don't have to go out and bid, but what I'm asking for the board is allow me to close that road down, access. And if you look to see the pictures, you'll see the damage and the liability there. I'm just afraid somebody gonna go there during the night and just run off the edge.
Do look rough.
Yes.
Pledge of the board on this?
This will be FEMA reimbursed?
It will be. We don't have a PW written yet. It's a damaged facility owned by the county, so yes, it will be. But it could easily be three months or more before that gets fixed.
We didn't have it insured then, is that right?
We don't insure any parking lot, that type of stuff with county insurance. We insure buildings, structures, but roadways, there's no insurance on that. It's just common for all local governments, you don't insure roadways. You rely upon your own maintenance crew, or we have our hurricane come in, then it's a declaration.
So, we got that certificate of occupancy before the storm, and it became our responsibility at that point? Do we know that for sure?
Yes. Well, we already know. We've always known it. It's always been, it was built on our property, and yes, yeah, the answer was yes. We have it. But there isn't any insurance claim. We didn't, we don't have... Same with Island View Park, another example. You know, there's no insurance claim on Island View. It's a public facility owned by the government, and without insurance, then our recourse for repairing is a presidential declaration and then federal funds.
I think in public interest, we need to shut it down before somebody get hurt, so we can figure out what we're gonna fix it up, what we're gonna do. I mean, we're gonna fix it, but I don't know when. But it's the pledge of the board on that. Pledge of the board.
Do we need to go out and bid on this stuff?
I'm trying to figure out what one of these the board's being asked to do at this point. Are you just wanting the board to shut down the park and look into moving forward with a PW? I mean, I don't...
That's correct.
Because you're not asking the board to authorize this work this morning?
No, no, no work right now, just to shut it down. Shut the access down to the restroom. Liability issue. If you just look at the second photo there, actually, you cannot get to the bathroom because the breakage right there between the asphalt and the wood round. So, if somebody walk up there and it's pitch dark, thinking they're going to the bathroom, they...
Oh, absolutely.
So, move.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion on that?
Yes, we need to get... I hope, we need to make sure we get a PW on this.
Okay.
If you would, hang around until Pam's stuff comes up.
Okay.
After you give your report, then we're gonna discuss a lot of this. PWs in different areas of the county that has to have PW written on it.
Yes, sir.
And I'll, we'll discuss that whenever she comes up, but...
Okay.
Any more discussion? Fund, on that one, when you do shut it down, if y'all got any lights you can put with the breakage there, or people gonna sneak in there.
Yes.
At night, if they fall, some kind of blankets.
I think you gotta block off the roadway down there, right where there's also, people can't even drive in there.
Right.
Yeah. So, they would be... I mean, I'm not sure you can illuminate that thing safely. I think if you put lights out there, you may, people may say, "Oh..."
That might draw it to them.
So, I would block it off, so you can't even... Right there at the Island Drive.
Do we have fencing to do that? Any fencing?
Fencing, or they have the concrete barricades.
Okay.
And some kind of signage, they can wire it's closed.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Darling, next thing, yes darling, letting you all know that the shooting range is open. They took care of that while I was out on vacation, so they got it going.
Did they really, did they make it higher?
Yes, sir. That is correct. I just told Howard, we want to actually add a little bit more dirt to the back wall to try to help slow the bullets down. But it did make it higher all the way around.
What about the sides?
Yes. Yes.
Any more discussion on that?
Sounds great. I thank you and your crew of Fonda for assisting Ken and helping us get it back open. It's on one we had. I mean, it's not the best scenario, but it's on one we got for now, so...
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you to you.
I let them know.
It's hunting season, and they don't, it's gonna be used, it's gonna be used a lot.
Right.
So, try to make, try to make it as safe as we can.
Okay.
Any more?
Fund, relative to debris pickup, what's the capacity like at the landfill and how's it coming along there?
Oh, I was gonna bring that up. I'm glad you asked, Commissioner. The, we have approximately about six acres, six acres that's untouched right now. But the problem is, is that with the debris steady coming in, we are only allowed to stage the majority of it, county debris. And it's getting cluttered. And we also have DEP coming in just about every day, checking the landfill out. So, we due for inspection right now, but I guess they just holding off considering, you know, the storm. But my understanding from staff, they also want us to close the staging areas down. They ready to move, close the thing out. So, that, like I said, I was gonna bring that up to you. I'm ready for the department to get back to normal, normal operation. But it's hard with us just having to stage the debris. We can't work it. That's county debris. Now, the state debris, they bring it in, we go ahead on and put it in the, in the ground.
They don't chip none of that up where you at?
Uh, we're not chipping down because with the space being limited, we're interfering with crowd of guff that bringing the veg in our area. So, that'd be a conflict with both tub grinders running.
But they are grinding up somehow. They're using tub grinders to grind it up?
Yes, yes. Crowd of guff are, yeah, they are, they're grinding what they bring in. But any, like the state, what they bring in, we staging it. And once crowd of guff move out, then we can start chipping. Again, the space is limited when you just stop piling. I mean...
The goal will be, though, at the end of this disaster, that you would have chipped or tub ground most of the debris, so we'll have that six acres back for C and D?
Yes, that's correct. Well, no, no, no. The veg is being chipped. Crowd of guff is chipping, and then what's up front in our yard trash area, we're gonna venture to chip it.
Okay.
But where we're staging the C and D...
Okay. It's gonna be...
It's gonna take up some space.
Yeah. Okay. But I guess, I'm leading you, but I mean, we're looking to make sure that at the end of this disaster, some of the land that was probably occupied by debris will be open for something else.
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
And does the state pay us money for using our landfill? Or are we a steward of just being involved?
For revenue, which is the state, is $488,000 right now.
A year to use it?
For storm debris. $488,000 is what we don't...
That's what the state has paid us to host their debris?
Is what the state owes us.
Ows us?
Yes.
For the purpose of hosting their debris?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Burying, staging it, whatever.
And so, they've taken that privilege, and they're moving their debris in and putting it in your landfill while, and understood, the county is staging its debris right now?
Yes.
And not burying it?
Right.
Okay, I see.
Yes.
That's interesting.
Now, is any debris really going into the landfill? Landfill's a lined facility. Are we actually using the landfill, the lined landfill?
The C and D is, is not lined.
Okay.
The landfill, the lined landfill...
I'm sold on that. There's a, there's a component that we built years and years ago, the lined landfill that was for household garbage.
Yes.
We actually have not used that in years. All that is transfer. So, when someone says, "Are we using the landfill?", I think, but I don't want the people to be confused that we're not using that lined landfill because it's too expensive. They were building another one. It's almost like a museum piece.
Yeah.
That the monitoring and the responsibilities of owning and maintaining a landfill are so burdensome on small counties that it's better for us and better for the public to tran, to transfer our garbage.
That's correct.
So, when you say, "Are we using the landfill?", I just want to make sure the record is we're not using that lined landfill, because that's, that's really reserved for a catastrophe where we can't transfer our garbage. And that's what I get. Everything else, when you say landfill, it's really an unlined, just proper...
Class three area, that's... So, but then the city of Carabelle sold us $42,000. The city of Appalachia's $129,000. So, we're looking at a half a million. We making buy some more land with one day hoping.
It's owed to us right now for hosting purposes.
Sir?
That money is owed to us by those county entities, by those government entities because we hosted their debris at our landfill.
Right. That's right. Or disposed of the, of the debris, yeah.
The challenge is that we're, our landfill is, we are getting more land for the C and D, but we are bounded where we're at by the state forest.
Yeah.
And private development, a little bit of school board property. I mean, we are trapped. And unless one of those three entities works with us, then we have a major problem on our hands, because now you're talking about opening up a separate landfill disposal area somewhere else in the county. I mean, I don't know where it will be. So, the best solution for us is for the Tate Hill State Forest, and I say this so you all understand where we're going, is for them to work with us to allow a little land in the state forest. We had that battle once we tried to build a prison on state land, and they said absolutely no. Very difficult time trying to find a place for the prison. We ended up having it in 67. But we need to be thinking forward.
Yes, we do.
Because in just a few years, our C and D area, even that little storm, is gonna be full. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so, we probably have a window of a few years here to find another, expand our disposal area. It's gonna be a problem.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Please.
Since we're all discussing this, guys, about how many acres, how many acres is the landfill, how many acres are our landfill currently? What we have, how many acres?
The usage or...
No, the whole parcel.
Whatever we got. Sixty acres, 100 acres?
No, it seems like it's 60, 60 or 66.
Sixty, yeah, 60 acres.
And we're using, what, two-thirds of that?
Yes.
The other parcel we need, I mean, we need to look at long-term solutions. You know, you're looking at another couple dozen, you know, 40 acres, 60 acres, you don't want to buy one or two acres. You need a lot.
Right, right. It needs to be at least 40.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, a number.
Well, you can't, can't count the bit of 40 head, because it's gonna be a while before they, these people be able to pay us. I guess FEMA got to pay them, they reimburse us, but as good as no we is. It's in the pie. I don't know.
Okay.
If not...
It's 85 acres, Commissioner.
Eighty-five.
According to the property agreement's website.
Okay.
Anything else for Mr. Davis?
Well, let me, so, famous, reminding you something. So, this is the deal. You know, it's a reimbursement thing. So, if the cities don't pay us, then they can't get reimbursed from FEMA. So, they, the cities and the government have got to pay us, because they're the ones getting reimbursed, not us. They've got to make that investment, and no one's done that yet. So, we need to make sure that they do, they can get their money, or they can get 87 and a half percent of their money. You know, right now, they don't, they have zero expense. Ultimately, they'll have 12 and a half percent expense, because there's this local mass that everybody has to pay. So, you know, we need to make sure the cities, you know, are aware that they got to pay in order for us, or they'll be reimbursed.
Don't forget the state memorandum picking up 100% of the cleanup costs.
Oh, oh, that's right. Thank you, thank you.
That sounded...
That mean we get the whole 100%.
That sounded even better.
Yeah, it's good.
Remind them, they ought to already know that. Right?
Yeah.
You said remind them.
Yeah, they, they know it.
They, they ought to know that when we thought, when them tractors cranked up.
That's why we signed that agreement. Everybody signed that agreement.
So, I guess I'm just waiting to see if we got a cutoff date on this debris. I mean, I'd love to see the county get clean, but it is, it's, they're on the edge at the landfill, so...
Well, we gonna talk about that. And Pam, we pulled a, okay, good.
Okay.
So, you just, when you finish yours, just hang around.
Okay.
We'll go from there.
That's it.
Okay, anybody got anything else for Mr. Davis? Keep up the good work.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Next on the agenda will be Ms. Pam Berna, Emergencies matter.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I actually have three things on my agenda. First on the agenda is opening of the request for proposals for disaster recovery services.
Yeah, could this take a while? Your other two items kind of fast, and if you know...
Uh, actually, the other, the second one is just picking up the committee, so, yeah. Second one is request for the board to approve for the scoring committee for the disaster recovery service to be comprised of the individuals and then come back to the board with recommendations to award the contract. And I suggest Tress Dameron, Whitney Coles from Planning and Zoning, and Alan Pierce. Jennifer and myself, we have excused ourselves from this because of the fact that C.D. McGuire, Jenny Devlin spent a lot of time in my office with us, and I don't want there to be any question if they were to be awarded the contract, that there was some kind of favoritism, because she spent a lot of time with us, but she didn't have that much interaction with Tress.
Pledge of the board on this?
So, move.
Sir.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion?
Third one is to revisit the final... Oh, I'm sorry.
Wait, wait, vote. I was asking that the board want to discuss. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, you can go ahead now.
The third one on the list is revisit the date for final debris pickup in the unincorporated areas of the county. The two cities have already announced their final debris pickup date would be the 10th of December, and that is just meaning to set their final date for putting any debris out. And then, of course, just like, you know, they'll claim there. So, do, does the board have any ideas of what date they want us to set?
Let me ask you something, Pam. I like, make sure that we get this straight. The 10th is when they start, right?
The 10th is the last day that you can put, as far as the two cities are concerned, the 10th is the last day that you can put any debris out. Okay? After that, then they will start pickup. That's just saying, that's the final date that you can put anything out as far as debris, because what we're seeing right now in the city of Appalachia Cola and in the city of Carabelle is you're seeing where people are trimming trees and they're cutting back their Sago palms and their palm trees, and they're throwing that out there. Well, that's just regular maintenance of your yard, and that is ineligible debris. And if it's picked up, then that FEMA will say it's ineligible, and then the county will be on the hook, or the cities will be on the hook for that debris. And the problem is, people are now beginning to throw this stuff up on, on top of eligible debris, and they're beginning to throw garbage on top of their debris, and that makes that whole pile ineligible. And they're beginning to throw garbage on top of their debris, uh, and that makes that whole pile ineligible. We cannot pick it up. And the contractors don't have time to put their people out there trying to pick through debris to get ineligible from eligible. But, uh.
Now they get the, uh, the big trees that y'all get with the cities to have them pull out and cut out so they can pick them up?
Yes, sir, they did.
Okay.
Those, those are just, right now, it's just the two municipalities have set their date. It's up to the county now to set your date of when you want to set your, your final date to put out any debris beside the road.
I think we need continuity and consistency. If it's the cities going December tenth to avoid confusion, seems to me we oughta have December tenth as also that day.
That's the pleasure of the board. Y'all tell me.
Pleasure to vote on. Let, let's talk about discussion on the board.
I, I wanna ask a question, Mr. Chairman, if I can.
Do it.
Uh, not trying to be simplistic, just trying to make sure, based on the question you had, Commissioner Lockley. So December tenth is just the final day to put it out. That does not mean they'll finish on December.
No, sir, they will, that's final day to put out, and then they'll start, like we discussed before, they'll start in zone one, and then zone two and zone three.
As I understood it, that's kinda what Commissioner Lockley was trying to find out for sure about. And that's really what I wanted to know too, so if that wasn't what he wanted, I'm, I'm not trying to put words in his mouth, but I wanted to know for sure that's what was going on. I, I'd be good with December tenth date.
Go ahead.
Even though we're setting a date and all this, you know, I, I think this stuff needs to be in a newspaper. Cause I, this is gonna be continuous people putting stuff out, and once these contractors leave, we don't have the ability to pick up some of this stuff that's been put out on the side of the road. It's gonna be a continuous problem. Uh, I, I just see people ignoring the cutoff date, still putting stuff on the right of way, and I'm not sure Fonda has the ability to pick this stuff up. I've seen big tree stumps, hello, I witnessed somebody yesterday on the end of Bluff Road that just throwing it in the ditch. And as Buster spoke earlier this morning, all your culverts are about stopped up with garbage and trash and limbs. We had all the rain the weekend. It, it's just a con, it's, it's a mess, uh, overall, but I don't see it stopping. But I do think you ought to be, ought to be put in the newspaper where everybody can read that this is it. Throw anything else out, it's considered illegal dumping. All this stuff needs to be put in the newspaper, not just sent out on a tape store, talked about here in this meeting, cause a lot of people don't watch the meetings, or they got direct TV, they don't get the meetings. So this is not the public notice that the public need. We need to take out a big ad in the newspaper to put these dates in there, what's eligible, what ain't eligible. Then they need to stop putting it on the side of the road, which means that it's left to the individual to hire a contractor or somebody else, and that ain't gonna happen either. It's gonna be a continuous problem, even after you put these dates out there with trash and garbage and trees on the side of the road, it's just gonna be a continuous problem. So I think you need to be better notification as to what we're doing when we cut this stuff off. They did, they did a decent job of getting this stuff up in my neighborhood. Uh, there's two roads that still need to be done, Pam, if you'll make a note of this and get this to the contractors. Bayview Drive in Appalachia Cola and Brownsville Road was full of stuff. And still full of stuff as far as I know, unless they got it yesterday. These two roads need to be done. Uh, Highland Park looks good, and I'm specifically speaking in my district, as we talked about this last two weeks. And I'm sure the other Commissioners have wrote their district, and if they have more roads that they need to be, needs to be done before the tenth, then they need to get that too. But Bayview Drive and Brownsville Road in, in Appalachia Cola needs to be picked up. Other than that, you know, it's pleasure to vote, it's one of the last dates, uh, but it's gonna be trash and more stuff put on the side, or even after this last date. I mean, that's just the way it's gonna be.
I just wanted to say, in, in complementing that point, we need to consider publishing deadline, if we're gonna be notifying ahead of time to get that out in the paper correctly.
That's outstanding, the clear. So good morning, Commissioners. Uh, the next edition will be on the thirteenth.
That'll be after the deadline.
Yeah, and so if you wanted a paper, we can move it another week down to the seventeenth as the last day. It'll be in the paper on the thirteenth, and then they have that weekend to get it all out. Monday would be the last day.
I'm just saying, you, you need better notification. Notification after the deadline's not gonna help us none, but.
Yeah.
And I know, and I know we have to reach a cutoff point, where I want the public to know that if they're dumping this stuff on the side of the road after this date, then it's considered illegal dumping.
But they gonna be, you know, all of that, what'd you say that date was, man?
It would be a week, it would be the seventeen, I would recommend, because like I said, it won't be published, published until the thirteen.
I don't see what that I heard in the county, because they got two, they got two deadlines, you got two deadlines on the tenth, right, with the cities.
You have the two municipalities, yes, sir.
Well, they, they not gonna do the whole thing at one time. I mean, they, they ain't got enough trucks in here now to do both of them at one time, or do they?
That would be the question for Crowder Golf, Mr. Don Matteo.
Good morning, Commissioners. Don Matteo, Regional Manager with Crowder Golf. The plan is to, if we could do all three, uh, having the, the same date for all three would be the best way to go. As Pam alluded to earlier, we're starting to see a lot of ineligible material come out. So we don't want the county to be de-obligated any funds. FEMA starts seeing green debris, and it's gonna raise all kinds of flags. So our consistent end date would be the best way to go.
But we gotta, well, what, what's happening now, we gotta, we got a problem with not know, we can't get notification out there to the people right now, because the deadline for the paper don't pay.
Okay. Well, I, I would just suggest to you that it would be in the county's best interest to, to move that date to the tenth. Uh, simply because you run the risk of FEMA de-obligation with ineligible material.
Y'all gonna pick it all up at one time?
No, sir, it won't be at the same time, but it would be in a matter of two or three days, we would be able to break, uh, cause we can bring in additional assets for that final day. So we would be able to equally distribute the assets in the cities and the county.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, what about the radio notification? I mean, uh.
We can do, we do radio, we do Frank, Franklin Alert.
The county's website.
Facebook.
And the county's website.
And the county's website. And our website.
Yeah, we need to do them all, though, so when the people get the fuzzies, then we can say we put it out there. I don't want nothing on our part to be holding nothing back. But anyway, another question I need to ask, they doing all this, and they, they getting ready to go, but we haven't heard, we, have we heard back from the people what they gonna do about the private rules?
Okay, Commissioner, I actually talked to the state, and, um, we can actually, I can file the paperwork, but when I sent an email back to the state, specifically asking per our conversation, the county will not be on the hook for any of the reimbursement for picking up private property debris. The answer I got back is, I can make no guarantee on that, that the county would not be responsible for private property, uh, debris pickup, uh, reimbursement to the state.
But if they okay it, and the people be them at the deadline on the other day, they gonna be gone, right?
No, sir, that's a separate program. Typically, PPDR is done long after the R O W work is done, because that, that R O W's, the work is all eligible materials, so now we've entered into a different component, uh, of the private property debris removal. So, for example, in Texas, we're still doing property debris removal, uh, private property debris removal from Hurricane Harvey. So it typically comes a little bit after the R O W stuff.
Well, I'm just one Commissioner, and I, I just, now, we not trying to hold y'all, not on my part.
No, sir, and, and we don't mind.
But we don't wanna rush through this thing, I mean, we, we want the county cleaning.
Yes, sir. And we wanna make sure the county gets reimbursed by the federal government.
Right.
Um, along with your monitoring firm. That is our, we're doing our due diligence, letting you know that the county could be potentially de-obligated for hauling in ineligible debris. You, you all started, Commissioner Lockley, you started about two weeks before everybody else in the panhandle. So FEMA's gonna take that into consideration when they come in here and do that.
They put a deadline on?
Sir.
Y'all got it?
We, we're putting.
FEMA put a deadline yet?
No, they're.
The state?
The, um, FEMA doesn't, uh, actually put a deadline on debris. The state has not put a deadline on, uh, pickup, because I specifically asked that question from, uh, DOT, when it's gonna be your final date. And I asked them, who's gonna be responsible for, uh, for making sure that all of it is cleaned up on state and, uh, federal highways? And the answer to my email was that we will make sure that it is cleaned up. That came from, uh, Ms. Sanders from FDOT.
Okay, well.
Commissioner, are they gonna get on the other side of the ditch and pick that stuff up, Pam?
I would assume so, Commissioner. Uh, she, her answer was to me that they will clean until it's clean.
Okay, cause I know between Carabelle.
If not, I'll take pictures and send them to her and say, this is, you know, this is not, not acceptable in our county. You gotta come back.
Between Carabelle and Alligator Point, you seen it, all that's on the, way on the other side of the ditch.
Uh, yes, sir, I've also seen whole houses dumped.
Yep.
Yep, that's right.
Uh, their response to me is, that's the sheriff's problem. Well, unless the sheriff catches the contractor dumping, it's not, there's no way to, to fix this after the fact. Uh, people, people have got to start, if you're seeing somebody, uh, illegal dumping, call. I had a call yesterday from someone, and I said, call the sheriff's office. You cannot clear your, use this opportunity to clear your property. And that's what I told him. He says, well, I'm getting, you know, my neighbors are complaining to me, and, you know, I'm on a board, so I said, well, call the sheriff's office. Y'all are seeing him do it. Y'all need to call the sheriff's office. That is illegal dumping. When you are clearing your property and putting it beside the road, the right of way, or the county to pick up, it is illegal dumping.
Well, we entered, entered it after like this, we had to use the neighborhood watch program.
Yes, sir, you sure do. It is, uh, well, color has a sign up, you see something, say something.
Let me, I'm gonna make a comment, Miss Lockley. Getting back to the private debris removal, her report says, she was informed by the state that the county could possibly be responsible for any debris picked up on private property.
Yes, sir.
They can't be responsible for going on private property if we're gonna have to pay for it.
That's right.
And that's the way it's been from day one. That's the reason we haven't entered into private property and went and picked up the stuff. So when it comes to private property, my suggestion is we don't pick it up, because we could possibly end up having to pay for it. And we don't have the money to pay for picking up debris on private property. That's the response she got from the state, and that was the question of what we're gonna do with private property.
And Commissioners, I agree with you. After researching and talking, and I agree with you one hundred percent, but I did research it, I did try to find a way. And there's no way that we can do this without jeopardizing the taxpayers' money to pick up private property, so.
When I, wait, let me, let's go back. When I was talking about private, I, I didn't mean going private, private, I was talking about them private roads.
Private roads.
And they gonna bring it out to the.
If they bring it out to the county right of way, which we've got a community that is doing that, that is, that is legal debris. Yes, they can do that. They can bring it out to county right of ways. And we've got, uh, a lot of, uh, people that are, that are doing that. That makes it eligible debris. But as far as our debris haulers going down those private roads and picking up what they put out beside the right of way, no, sir, that's ineligible debris. But if they bring it to the county's right of way, off their road, it is then eligible for pickup.
Yeah, well, maybe that, I, I might have interpreted it wrong, but I wasn't talking about going on nobody's private.
No, sir, we never go on property and remove their debris. They have to bring it to the right of way, but even on a private road, we can't go down and pick it up.
That's what I meant, I should've, I should've specified that a little better. Okay, um, after the be, pleasure to vote on.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Do it.
Ms. Pam, you work for us, you're our staff. What's your recommendation with the state?
My recommendation would be to go with the tenth, so like they're saying, it's, it's consistent, Commissioner. We have been pushing it out for, uh, almost a week now for your two cities. And again, we can get with the, um, voice to radio, we can, um, Facebook, our websites, and push it out as much as possible.
Only a motion that we use the tenth as the date.
You making that, put that in form?
Yes, sir.
I second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Burke. Any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously, tenth to be, but we want the county cleaned up.
That's just the last day to put it out.
That's the last day. If the county not clean, then we, we not gonna find.
We can't release them, we don't release them till you're happy, Commissioner.
Okay.
Can I ask Pam a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
The longer that we wait at the landfill, the longer we stay there, so after that cutoff, do we still get the full one hundred percent reimbursement?
That's, Fonda, that's just our, saying you can't put anything else out. The full one hundred reverse, reimbursement is until we completely clean our county and release our contractor. So we're good.
I, I think the challenge would be after the tenth, is that at some point, FEMA people will come down and start looking at the debris.
Already looking.
And they're gonna say, that's not eligible, and they're gonna sit there, but they're not gonna reimburse us. And we have that problem without a disaster. We have people dumping stuff on the side of the road. So I don't wanna mislead anybody, that it's gonna be FEMA saying to the county, you can keep a contractor here all you want, but guess what, we're not paying for it. Is that a risk?
Okay, I'm gonna ask them something too, uh, oh. Now, you got, you got your deadline the tenth?
Yes, sir.
Could you give us a guesstimate, guesstimate, now that, you know, about how long it gonna take you to?
Seven to ten days.
Seven to ten days?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, all right, so you'll be.
Okay, we'll go back to item number one now, is opening up the re, uh, disaster recovery.
So what we're doing, because of somebody, what we're doing, Pam, we're just reading.
We're just reading them, and then the committee will actually, uh, we have a scoring sheet that they will go through them and score them, and then bring back the recommendation for contract to the board.
Pam, we have two questions. One, it was for the attorney. I understand one came in after the timeline. Are you aware of this?
If it comes.
Thought that the time was received at three fifty-five, uh, central. Cut off at three P M. Eastern, just came in at three fifty-five central. It came an hour late. Does the board wanna accept that?
The board has always had the ability to waive technical defects. We've had people before that were late with the filing. Their explanation in this case is that they thought the filing deadline was central time, not eastern time. The board could reject the late filing if you wanted to, but my recommendation would be to accept the late filing, the explanation given and allowed that whoever that is has submitted, I, I didn't quite hear the name, but to let that person's proposal be considered by the committee. But that would require action by the board.
Pleasure to vote on that?
So moved.
Second. I got a motion on, on the floor by Commissioner Masters, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously to accept it, right?
And then just for the record, Pam, there's another one that came in called E. Civis, and it's, it's a thing here. They are just letting the board know that they did not respond to the RFP. They somehow think that they're entitled to be selected anyway. It's a very confusing situation, but we have a document here that they, we sent the first letter. E. Civis probably submits this letter formally notifying the county of the decision not to respond to the RFP. So I just wanna make sure the board is aware that we have one that we're not gonna count, because they, they're saying they're not responding, they think they're entitled some other way.
What they, what's up with the?
Repeat that? What? Well, I don't know why they even sent it to us.
Lawyer, Mr. Shula, what's up with, can you?
Boy, I have a minute to read it and think about it.
Specifically states in our RFP, we have to send copies, we have to send electronic copy now. Um, since we didn't wanna reinvent the wheel, we actually took the counties and made it our own, and changed some of the language. But in that RFP, it did say if you were not going to respond, that you needed to send the county a letter saying that you are not gonna respond. That's what that is.
Okay, so they're, they're not talking on both sides.
No, no, I had one electronically respond to me and say, just to let the county know, we're not responding to this RFP, because it went. Yes, it stays with the file.
So what's the first one?
I'm looking to see, it's the RFP, and on the front side of it, it's kind of unusual.
So they sent us our, our complete RFP back. Did that, somebody else send it or not?
That may.
Here's the original right here.
That popped over with that letter, I'm paying you.
I have no idea. All right, so, so there was a flag. Basically, the first one we opened was, was R O RFP, someone sent it back.
Who was the person referring it to?
I have no name.
Nothing on there. I am, I'm assuming it's probably this.
G P Strategies, uh, they're out of actually Panama City. Second one's Wheeler from Mariana. Next one's Atkins from Tampa. Rod Stan's from Valrico, Florida. Rod Stan.
Rod Stan?
Rod Stan.
What kind of flow? Valrico, Florida. Stand there by Tampa.
I'm sorry.
Plexus from Baton Rouge, Louisiana.
CDR Maguire.
And CDR Maguire, which is from...
Tallahassee.
Tallahassee.
Okay. Pam, would you say what we're doing so the public can know?
Okay. Once again, y'all approved the committee that will actually go through these RFQ... RFP, excuse me. And there is an evaluation scoring sheet that they will actually grade the contractors. And then they... The one that scores the highest, they'll come back to the board with their recommendation and ask the board for a contract for those contractors. We pick three contractors, and we do a non-exclusive contract. That means that the county has the option to pick and choose out of those three which ones that they won't work on this project, and they can use another contractor on another project.
So, you have a rating schedule?
Yes. So, we have a rating. We score them.
Okay. Please, the board.
I make a motion with Senate Committee to come back with a recommendation.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, seconded by Commissioner Burton. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Pam, do you want to discuss about the possibility of a special meeting to deal with this, or you'll wait two weeks? So, right now, we don't have anybody assisting right. Is there a timeline crunch where we...
Yes, sir. I would suggest as soon as we can get the score, that we get back to the board with a recommendation and a contract that we can go ahead and move forward so they can get in here and start collecting our information, start writing our project worksheets. That way, I can set up with FEMA our kickoff meeting.
How long it gonna take out of school?
I'm hoping it shouldn't take them but a couple of days because the scoring mechanism is pretty simple. It's just reading through it, and the evaluation sheet really lays out what they're looking for in that contractor.
Okay. Wait the way you come. How are we looking? How y'all looking for BMBs? How y'all looking for BMBs if they have a special meeting? If they want a special meeting, how y'all looking?
Good.
Don't wait. I hear, but...
Well, they gotta give me the opportunity. I'll have to check against the court calendar to make sure that the room is available, and then I'll get with Pam with picking that up and talk to Pam. Is that okay?
Okay. We'll call everybody. I'm available. Well, I had to get a will anyway.
Okay. Well, it's gonna be a fairly short meeting. It's gonna be, hopefully, just accepting the recommendations of the committee and voting. It won't be a long meeting.
I know, but I try to be as advanced.
I would say, yeah, tend to look at it next Tuesday maybe or something like that.
Is this for disaster recovery services for a year 2019?
It will actually... What we put out in RFQ is we put it out there that we'd like to do a, yes, sir, a three-year contract with an extension, I think, for another year. It may have been another two years after that. Now, these are the people that's actually gonna come in and write your project worksheets and submit them to FEMA to make sure, and then follow them through to make sure that the county gets back every dime that we are entitled to.
Good. But this taking place for the pre-existing?
Yes, sir. That one was for 30. We used that as a 30-day contract, and we canceled that contract. So, these are the new one. And again, the old contractor was C.D. Maguire, and they did resubmit a bit, but they have to go back into the pool and have to be reevaluated again.
Okay. All right.
Any discussion?
Looking at going after these contracts and trying to find another contractor, consultant to assist you, Pam, we, I want you to listen up on this one. We have to make sure that all these county departments, including Mr. Davis, including the work camp, the road camp, all these people need to make a list of everything that's tore up that belongs to the public. And this consultant is supposed to, I'm taking, assist you in doing this stuff, but I would like you involved in every little thing.
Yes, sir.
You work for this board. And I know it says down here that work will include working with federal, state agencies, and local governments. Well, you're our person for local governments to like keep us informed of what's going on.
Yes, sir. And they work with the department heads to get their damages so they can start writing their project worksheets.
So, all these ballparks, Lombardies out there being tore up, C-30 down here, Alligator Point Road, all these different things that are tore up in the county must be reported, and we must get reimbursement on it. So, we all got to work together, department heads, Ms. Pam, and this consultant, whoever that might be. But this consultant does not... I wanna make it clear that this consultant does not take your place.
No, sir. No, sir.
He's there. Or he or she is there to assist you.
Yes, sir.
In making all this stuff. But you gotta be involved in every little thing from step A to step Z to make sure that all these county projects are submitted, and we get reimbursed for this stuff. You don't, it's gonna bankrupt this county.
No, sir.
We can't miss anything. Everything this county's entitled to, from the reimbursement at the landfill, and these two cities, and everything has to be gone through, Pam, and it stops with you.
Yes, sir.
You advise these consultants what you want done, and it would be nice if we had a list of stuff to present these consultants when they come on board. This is a list of stuff that's tore up with parks and roads. This is a list of stuff that's tore up with road and bridge. This is a list of stuff of buildings that's tore up. The causeway we just talked about over there, ponder. All this stuff has got to be done over time. All this stuff has to be done. And I'm not relying so much on this consultant. I'm relying on Ms. Pam because she is the employee of the board, and she is the one ultimately responsible for making sure these consultants do their job, do it right, the reimbursements are submitted, and they are to assist you with some of the cumbersome things that FEMA regulations and stuff like this that you may not be aware of. I understand. But I'm looking for you to be the ramrod for this thing and making sure that this county gets reimbursed for everything that we're entitled to be reimbursed for. So, I just wanted to lay that out there, and I wanted to ask ponder to stay here. I wish that ass busting stay. But we all have to be on the same page. Now, when it comes to constitutional officers such as the sheriff, he does that himself. He puts in his overtime. And so, you know, it says constitutional officers, but this consultant is working for Frank. And if we can assist them, fine. But they know what protocol and procedure is. I mean, this ain't the first storm we ever been through. But I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page as to how the process works and how it should work, and that you are ultimately the one working for the county to make sure all this stuff happens.
Yes, sir. They had already started a list, working with the departments, before CDR Maguire left last time.
Right now, I'm in limbo because we don't have a consultant. I'm saying, who's working on this stuff? Because I don't wanna miss these deadlines on some of these PAs and stuff.
Actually, Commissioner, until we do our kickoff meeting, which I'd already informed FEMA, we would not schedule our kickoff meeting until we had a consultant hired. And then after that, we have 60 days to submit all our project worksheets. That's just like I asked Howard this morning. Even our street signs that were lost are eligible. But again, it's a process. You got to GPS it. You've got to note what street it was on. All these things are eligible. These are things that we've never lost before, but we lost in this one. So, yes, sir. We're working with the departments to make sure that we get the information, detailed information, that we need to move forward with writing our project worksheets.
What I'm saying is I don't want anything to slip through the cracks.
No, sir. I agree with you.
We gotta stay on top of it. We gotta make sure everything's done. Of course, right now, we're operating off county money. And if we drag our feet around, we may not get nothing for two years. So, I wanna see it done in a timely fashion. I wanna see it done correctly and how it's supposed to be done and get these reimbursements coming back. Now, when it gets to the cities and them paying their landfill tipping fees, they gotta pay them before they can be reimbursed? Is that what I understood while that?
Actually, since it's 100%, FDOT will be reimbursing that.
Okay. Well, all this stuff has to be done, and it's a lot of work for you and your staff. But ultimately, you're the ones that's gonna be overseeing these consultants. So, you know, just 'cause we're hiring a consultant, I don't want you to think that's your job done because it ain't. Your job's just beginning.
Yes, sir. I know.
And it's a lot of responsibility and a lot of work. I understand. But we gotta do what we gotta do because if we don't get reimbursed for this stuff, we're gonna be in bad trouble. And then if we don't get reimbursed, then it falls back on the taxpayer because somebody's got to pay. And the taxpayer is where the government gets their revenue stream, the local government. So, I wanna make sure that we're clear on what we're doing and how we're doing, and making sure that things are done in the proper protocol, and we follow that protocol and procedure to make sure it happens. You got something, Mike?
Yes, sir. I was able to confirm. Next Tuesday, this room is available, so we can meet next Tuesday at 9:00. Shouldn't take more than 15 minutes if that's what.
Okay. Well, looking, you the boots on the ground. You is the boot on the ground. You and your staff. That's why they had 100 years' term, though. They don't have them every day. But like you said, it's a lot of stuff. We deal with everything we own. I mean, do a price list, check it, and make sure they do it. Go over it and make sure it's done. Because when they gone, it's gone.
And then also, I wanna reinforce all that, Pam, that this consultant that we're paying these well-deserved fees for, that is money that we pay them that is net what our reimbursement is from FEMA.
You actually... Actually, you can get reimbursed from FEMA.
For the consulting fees they're bidding on now?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
That's good.
That's FEMA reimbursable. Yes, sir.
That's huge because that even makes it more of an incentive for us to inventory every single issue relative to that.
Yes, sir.
And pick one that we can... We won't have to be losing in the middle of disasters. Hopefully, we get one that we can be on the scene every day that way. Because this time, it's a bad time to be picking them.
Yes, sir. Like I said, that one little not putting weight to that price list. I did everything right except that, and that's because we normally do a task list.
Everybody make a mistake, but it's just a bad time to be, you know...
Yes, sir. I agree with you.
We in the middle of the disaster. It's time to try to get back on the foot. We gonna bounce back. We gonna bounce back from it.
Mr. Chairman, if I would, I'd like to make a motion for us to go and have that scheduled, that meeting for next Tuesday at 9:00.
Okay. I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parrish. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? A motion carries. And if you need any help, Pam, excuse me, let us know so we can pull some of the people out. If need be, we'll get to some help. If need be, you know. Might have to use some of Michael Crewe a little bit.
I just need to make sure that from the different departments that they give me a complete list of everything.
They'll work with you. They gonna work with you.
Yes, yes. I mean, Link's already sending her stuff, and I've got stuff from Virginia. And like I said, I asked Howard again today about the street signs because I asked him what the price was to make a sign, and it's a pretty hefty tab for the county when you start making all these street signs.
$130 is from the bottom to the top.
There you go.
And that doesn't include installation?
That's right.
That's another big factor to keep adding into that pot. Yep?
Got to add everything. Everything you do. I mean, you're doing it.
Yes, sir.
And you're not taking nothing. It's got to be done.
I had one more question.
Yes, sir.
Pam, I saw in a Tallahassee Democrat last week that Franklin County had one death relative to Hurricane Michael. I just brought you this article just so you'd see it and why they put it in there.
The man with the heart attack in East Point, he was doing... I remember this. It was a heart attack in the East Point. Gentleman was during the storm, was trying to do something and he had a heart attack.
I see. Okay.
She should have been gone.
You can keep that, Pam.
Should have been gone. That's what we do evacuations for.
Situation, you know, he might have had a heart attack anyway.
Yeah. It wasn't direct. Yeah. But during an incident.
For informational purposes, I had a call from the governor's aide yesterday inviting myself to be at the governor's office this morning, unfortunately, at 9:00, the same as this, along with other EM directors, to do an appreciation of a job well done.
Very good.
Why they headed that? They knew meeting be on...
Yeah.
I don't know if they know what our board meetings are, but his aide did call me yesterday, and she apologized for such late notice. But they did call me, and I knew that this was a very important meeting that I needed to be at this morning so we could finalize some things so we can move forward.
That's good. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, let me just add one thing. So, the only... The project that has been going on before, I want to say before Pam was born, is Alligator Point.
Yes.
And so, Alligator Point is a project that I sort of got stuck with, and I'm still stuck with. And so, that is because of the long-term history of that thing, that PW is going to take some involvement outside of the scope of the consultants. And so, I realized that I'm gonna be into that. And because of that, tomorrow morning, Frank Mccone called me just a very before the meeting started. So, I'm gonna go down to Alligator Point tomorrow morning, meeting with state officials to begin a review on their end about what some solutions are. You know, I will tell you now that one of the solutions the state has put forward and we're working on is land acquisition. Land acquisition is a voluntary effort to try and remove some of the problems and some of the property owners out, get them out of the situation. But if it's not entirely successful, we're gonna have another problem down there because we can't relocate that road unless everybody sells. You can't just have nine out of 10. You gotta have all 10 to get out of the way. And I hope that we're successful, but at this point, we don't have 100% participation. And so, we will be looking at options. And one of the options, which is very expensive and stalls everything, is when you have to go through condemnation. So, unless we get some outside-of-state assistance, I'm not sure where we're gonna end up. But I just wanna put it out there that condemnation isn't gonna get the property necessarily any more money. It's gonna get the lawyers a lot more money. But we pay fair market value based upon the appraisal we have, whether it's a voluntary acquisition or whether it's a condemnation. And I prefer to be sure to correct me if I'm saying something wrong. But the condemnation process is much longer and much more difficult to get done, and we have a road that's washing away as we speak. So, I'm gonna go down there tomorrow morning. At this point, we have heard nothing from the governor's office. We've heard nothing from DOT. We've heard nothing from anybody outside of the county helping us with Alligator Point except for emergency management, and their offer is, "We're gonna give you some money to buy some land, to buy people out and move the road in." So, I just want people to know that we are trying what we can, but unless we get more assistance, then we have a long road to hold trying to get that road moved off the shore.
Need a bridge.
I just wanna reinforce that these approaches seem to me to be a multifaceted approach. We have the land acquisition approach for part of the resolution of that destroyed road at Alligator Point. We have lobbying with the state. We have grassroots work with the people who are living there at Alligator Point. And I see these multiple approaches that... One of them's gonna catch fire and work. Or it also may show the state the diligence, the good faith, and the high energy that we are putting into this very critical situation that we have on that road. And we're working as a good steward of that road to get the state to take it over. And the homework we're already doing for the state, I think, will help account for that. Thank you.
All right. Pam, you got something?
No, sir.
Okay. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And if you need any help with that, let us know.
Okay. I will.
We'll get you some assistance.
Yes, sir.
Next on the... Gonna be Mr. Eric Lewis, right? Stenchin' Office Director.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I do not have any items requiring board action today, but I would like to update you regarding Commissioner Bolt's request at the last meeting to talk with folks out at the Carabao Airport regarding vegetation issue along the runway where the runway lights are. I did meet with Mr. Tim Sullivan out at the airport and saw what the situation was. And they do have a problem with some really tough perennial grasses that are growing kind of in the cracks in the asphalt along the side of the runway, on the strips on either side where the runway lights are. So, that vegetation has not responded very well at all to treatments that they've tried. So... So I have put out some fielders to our extension horticulture agents in the district to try to get some backup support, some ideas there to address that issue. It is a situation that does require kind of a bare ground approach around those lights for safety issues on the airport. So we'll be working on that, and I haven't heard back from them yet with a solution. But it's one of those situations that may take a few attempts to try to find something that works well. Those grasses actually have roots going down right through the cracks in the asphalt. So it's a tough plant to actually get to with an herbicide. But we'll be thinking about it and coming back with some ideas.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that very much.
That's all I have for today.
Okay, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris. Next on the agenda, Mr. Jason Perk, Airport Manager.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I just want to take a few moments to bring an update on the airport. The first thing is, I want to say publicly an incredible thank you to Centric Aviation for their help during the post-storm relief effort. The airport was an integral part of the swift recovery efforts after Hurricane Michael. The airport was used for search and rescue efforts and was ultimately credited with saving fifteen lives. Fifty-eight lives saving since were also performed by the United States Coast Guard using our airport as a staging area. Centric Aviation was informed by state officials that had the airport not been open and operational with twenty-four hour operations the night of the hurricane, those lives would have not been lost. I want to reiterate that that was completely outside the scope of Centric Aviation's agreement with us as a county for them to be operational twenty-four hours. They did that basically goodwill, and it absolutely showed dividends. After search and rescue operations ceased, the airport began to see a flurry of humanitarian aid, flights being the only airport in the area operating on the initial forty-eight hours post-hurricane. In additional National Guard air support, the airport was designated as a staging area for Operation Airdrop and the World Hope Organization, with the assistance of local volunteers, Centric Aviation processed assorted supply drops from over one hundred aircraft in a forty-eight hour period, getting much-needed food and water to people in the community. In addition to search and rescue and humanitarian efforts, the airport worked in conjunction with Duke Energy and Recovery Logistics to accommodate the expansion of their work camp well beyond anything they have ever done before. It became the largest camp Duke Energy ever has assembled and implemented with over three thousand workers based at our airport for over a month. They would not have been able to implement a camp of that magnitude if not for the support of our fine airport. I just want to say again, incredible job by Centric Aviation to keep that airport operational and open during, during an incredible time. They did a fantastic job. Moving along real quickly into our current projects, the access road project we've been working on for quite a while. It went out for bid on October twenty-fifth and did not receive any responses from bidders who were interested in bidding the project. We believe that that is, that appears to be due to the recovery efforts that are going on from Hurricane Michael. So we coordinated with Alan Pearson, and he agreed to re-advertise the project in January, and the FDOT also agreed with that. Economic Development Study, all the work, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We talked about, we revisit whether we want to advertise in January based upon what we see as a workload of contractors.
Sure.
The fact that it's still high, we may wait.
Yeah, they're, they're just, they've got other, other things going on right now. The Economic Development Study, all the work is complete on that. We're waiting on to schedule the final presentation till after a couple of things happen that we want to present. A couple of those things, actually, today I'm meeting with an avionics company out of Tallahassee that is looking to relocate to our airport that will probably eventually bring, you know, a handful of jobs in there. We also have a mechanic, an AMP mechanic, that is wanting to relocate his business from Panama City to Appalachia Cola that will, that will employ a few folks. And then we have a meeting next week with a potential company that might be relocating to this area. That could, that could be a, be a pretty big economic shot in the arm. So a lot of things are going on from an economic, economic development standpoint. We're kind of waiting to all those kind of things shake out before we make the final presentation and get some more hard numbers for you guys to look at.
Associate with that, so the board directed last time, we sent a letter to Triumph Board to saying that we are looking at revising our list of priorities, and the airport's going to be a part of that priority. And so we said, after we have this meeting with this outside company that's interested in relocating to Florida, then I'll come to you all hopefully by December twentieth with a list of things we want to see at the airport, one of which I'm sure will be money to give us an upgrade on our fuel dispensing. We have an old fuel dispens area and had that, and Centric, as well as the state of Florida, worked cooperatively to keep our fuel running, but we need a new, essentially six hundred thousand, a half million dollar improvement in our fuel storage and delivery system out there. And so we hope to get that funded pretty quickly.
Yeah, the FDOT has been, has been very proactive asking me what they can do after action. And that was one of the items that we, that we noticed. We had fuel in our fuel farm, but no way to get it out with power being out. And the fuel farm is antiquated and outdated, so the FDOT has asked me to kind of prepare them a cost estimate of what it would cost to put us a new one in. So that's, that's.
I have a call from Centric about six hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's about, yeah, that's about same thing. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I would say the fuel was so critical, and Jason, you all may already know this, was that they were, the state of Florida was prepared to bring a Blackhawk helicopter, bring a generator and a Blackhawk helicopter in here to keep the fuel running. We were the only fueling site between Tallahassee and Pensacola during that critical period. So we provided the only fuel source for this whole recovery effort.
It was, it was amazing. Airport didn't sustain more damage than it did. But it was also advantageous to a lot of folks that we were able to do, you know, relief aid right here. And then last but not least, the marking project we've all been kind of waiting on is currently ongoing. And we're getting all three runways repainted, restripped with all mildew removal on all three runways. So that is, that is something that's been long needed, and we're excited to get that done.
The only other thing, are you done?
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, there was, there was a crash, so it was.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I can talk about that, and I'd like to get another feather in Centric Aviation's cap. I was notified that we did have a crash of a single-engine aircraft that departed our airport on the way back to South Florida. The first thing I always look for when that happens is, did they refuel with us? Well, they did refuel with us. Centric Aviation did an incredible job. We've got fuel samples from that morning, fuel samples from that evening. We fueled airplanes before this guy and then after this guy, and none of the aircraft are suffering, you know, had any other issues. So we, we can pretty much, you know, come to the conclusion it wasn't a fuel-related issue. And so our prayers and thoughts go out to that family. It was a tragic situation.
So he took off and then he was circling back?
We don't know that. NTSB has not given us that, that information yet. But there's been some speculation on that. We don't know if he had, you know, an engine failure on takeoff, which is the most critical portion of flight. But I don't know if he was trying to circle back, if he had an engine failure then trying to circle back. Not sure exactly what happened, but it was about three miles off, off the end of the runway.
Can I speak real quick? On the airport, utilization of the airport during the disaster?
Yes, sir.
It was very critical that we allowed Duke Energy to use that portion of the run, of the airport.
Yes, sir.
Not only to respond to this community's needs, but to our neighboring community's needs. They staged there while they fixed Gulf County over there. And without having this staging area, it would have been tremendous. And I want to thank Centric for working with us and yourself, working with us. I know that everybody wanted that runway open and this and that. But there were more, more important things, not only for this community, but for our neighboring communities. And they're very appreciative. I talked to a lot of people from Gulf County, and they were very appreciative that Duke was allowed to continue to stage there and continue to go over and fix all the way to Mexico Beach. So it was very advantageous for us to get our power back on within four days, but it was also very advantageous for our community, for our neighboring communities to also be to have their power restored while Duke Energy was staged there. So we do know it was inconvenient for Centric and inconvenient for our neighbor, our neighbor, I mean, our airport, but it was very convenient for our neighbors to our west. So I just want to send them some kudos for working with us and allowing Duke to stay there because it was very advantageous to everybody around us. And as you said about the fueling and everything, we just all had to work together to make it work in a time of disaster. Hopefully, we don't see one of these in a long time. But it did work out the best for everybody, including our neighbor. And I would like, like you to relay that too.
I certainly will. Yes, sir. Thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman, I had something to add, please. Talking to Mr. Danny Collins, and the last time he was in this room, I think he got a standing ovation from Duke. None of that's possible without them staging at our airport. I seen him at the Mexican restaurant the night they were getting ready to go out from Franklin County and start working their way west. And I asked him if he was going to be at the conference, we'd just come back from it at the end of November. He said, "Yeah, I'll be there." I said, "How are you going to be there? You're going to be fixing power from Gulf County and Mexico Beach." And he said, "We'll be done with that in two weeks." I said, "Do what?" He said, "Well, we've got a good staging area. We've got a good place to work from, and it's going to make it possible." He said, "We're going to be done in two," and it worked. But the backstory is, it's because they were in our airport.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, thank you all very much.
Absolutely, thank you. We have one more thing. Jason, I wanted to remember how we have a neat cooperation between the Carabelle Airport and the Appalachia Cola Airport, where we bond together with fuel supply and we get delivery on the same day, and we save money for both of our airports. I'd like to invite you to think of any kind of bonding bilateral opportunities that our two airports can do to serve together. In many ways, we are very close together.
Sure.
I'm on the Carabelle Aviation Advisory Board, and as we look at funding, grants, FDOT, and all those issues, I, I'd like you to think of any kind of creative ways that we can do more with less and bond together two airports.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, absolutely. I'll do my best to think of ways that we can, that we can work in a symbiotic relationship. We're so close, we need to, we need to partner.
Be aware that Eglin Air Force Base has announced a proposal to put some radar tracking facility in the Carabelle area. And there may be other alternatives relative to our two airports where it may be better suited, and I'd like you to think about that and talk about it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Wait, you have time?
No, I'm good, I'm good.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir, thank you. Have a great day.
Is Mr. Wilkinson here?
Yes, sir.
Take him down, go ahead.
Hello, I'm Randy Wilkerson with the Escambia County Housing Finance Authority. And first of all, I just appreciate the opportunity to be here today and talk to you a little bit about some changes that we're making. I think most of you will remember I was here last year for approval of a resolution to continue our partnership that's been in place for many years, where we provide first-time homebuyer assistance in nineteen counties, including Franklin, where we also provide down payment closing cost assistance to those buyers that we finance. The authority provides the financing, we provide the bond capacity. We basically handle the program at no cost to you, it's at no cost to the county. There's no obligation on your part in terms of the bonds or the financing because the backup for the bonds is actually the mortgages that are issued. We work locally with Centennial Bank, also Capital City over in Gulf County as well, and to bring this program to, to the county. What I'm here for today, in, since the, kind of the housing meltdown of two thousand seven eight, we've had to use what's called mortgage-backed securities to finance our programs because after the meltdown, the ability to issue single-family mortgage revenue bonds just simply hasn't existed. With the change in the markets now, interest rates starting to go up, we see an opportunity probably early next year to actually go back to issuing single-family mortgage revenue bonds, which is basically an ability to control interest rates or at least control the rise in interest rates as they rise across the general market. So what this resolution today, to kind of differentiate it from the one we approved last year, this one essentially is providing area of operation authority. So it's in essence giving us the authority or the permission to issue bonds across our nineteen counties, including Franklin, that would allow us to provide the program here for first-time homebuyers in your county through issuance of bonds. We already have the bond allocation from the state, the authority does. So we're not asking for a bond allocation from you. It shouldn't impact your bond issuance, any bond issuance that you may have planned because we've already got the allocation on the front end. Program's been around, I think most of you know the authority's been around since the eighties. Long-standing, very well-respected, one of, we're one of basically seven or eight housing finance authorities in Florida. I guess the unique part of the Escambia Authority is we've partnered with a lot of smaller counties who don't have the ability to provide programs like this as a standalone. But when you bulk all of us together, we can do it. And so essentially, what we're looking for today is for you to approve the two thousand eighteen area of operation resolution specific to the issuance of single-family mortgage revenue bonds. I think with that, I know most of you are familiar with us and even maybe familiar with me. So I just, I'd just give you the opportunity, if there's any questions. Michael's been extremely helpful as well.
I just want to remind him, it doesn't affect the ship program or any of that funding in any way.
Right.
Because I try to repeat that every year.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Paris, talking about Commissioner Matt. Any more discussion? Yeah, this helped the ship program.
Right. They work very well together.
It'll make, it'll be more. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Sure.